Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the March 23, 2023 Monthly Meeting of the Henrico School Board. And the first item on our agenda this evening is for the board to approve the agenda. Board members may have a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Ogburn. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda's been approved. And the next item is the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Cashwell to introduce our special guests.
Thank you, Chair Kinsella, members of the board. To our guests, good evening. We're so pleased to have you with us. We will begin this meeting, as we do all of our meetings, which will be started by the Pledge of Allegiance led by students. That's going to be followed by a moment of silence if you'd remain standing after the pledge. We are so excited to have students from Lakeside Elementary School here with us this evening, who are going to come forward in just a moment and will begin to lead us in the pledge. They're joined by their principal, Holly Drake, who will come forward and introduce the students, as well as, I believe, their teacher, Kiana Bobbitt, who is also the SCA representative. So, Mrs. Drake, if you want to come forward to the podium. The students who will lead us in the pledge, if you want to come forward to be introduced. And then, we're going to go ahead and take our places for the pledge. Good evening. I am proud Principal Holly Drake of Lakeside Elementary, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kiana Bobbitt, who is our SCA sponsor, to introduce our students this evening.
Good evening. I'm Kiana Bobbitt, and I have the pleasure of introducing our SCA board. And for president, we have Reham Zolik, historian Kayanne Duran. Our secretary is Cadi Rumwell, and our treasurer is Fisika Beto.
All right. We ask that those who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And students, hopefully you won't trip over it like I did, and you can lead us when you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would remain standing for a moment of silence, which can be used by those in attendance for a moment of prayer, reflection, or meditation. And that concludes our moment of silence. And a big round of applause to our students from Lakeside. Thank so much for joining us. We're so glad to have you here, and you may be seated. Next, we have our performance highlight. So, the board members and I are going to make our way down to the audience, so we can enjoy the next feature, also with students from Lakeside Elementary.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues, and guests. My name is Christopher Mosley. I am the Education Specialist for Performing Arts. And as we celebrate Arts in Our Schools Month, it is my pleasure to introduce for our performance highlight this evening, the Lakeside Elementary Recorder Ensemble, under the direction of Mrs. Sarah Hagerty. Ms. Hagerty has been... Yes, you can. Ms. Hagerty has been at Lakeside for 16 years. The students will perform two selections on their soprano recorder, and I'm sure many of you remember that instrument. That's part of our 4th grade curriculum, and they'll be using the Elementary Quaver Music Education Resource. They'll be performing Glu... Blues and Perry the Sheep. And we have a special role of Perry being played by Leighton Welch. So, please help me welcome to the stage Lakeside's Recorder Ensemble.
What's happened to me? I'm stuck in super glue. Can't you see? Oh geez. What's happened to me? It's a sticky situation. You can set me free. If you tap me on the shoulder, I can go to my seat. Boom, chicka boom. I can move my feet. Oh geez. What's happened to me? I'm stuck in super glue. Can't you see? Oh geez. What's happened to me? It's a sticky situation. You can set me free. If you tap me on the shoulder, I can go to my seat. Boom, chicka boom. I can move my feet. Oh geez. What's happened to me? I'm stuck in super glue. Can't you see? Oh geez. What's happened to me? It's a sticky situation. You can set me free. If you tap me on the shoulder, I can go to my seat. Boom, chicka boom. I can move my feet. Oh geez. What's happened to me? I'm stuck in super glue. Can't you see? Oh geez. What's happened to me? It's a sticky situation. You can set me free. If you tap me on the shoulder, I can go to my seat. Boom, chicka boom. I can move my feet. Oh geez. What's happened to me? I'm stuck in super glue. Can't you see? Oh geez. What's happened to me? It's a sticky situation. You can set me free. If you tap me on the shoulder, I can go to my seat. Boom, chicka boom. I can move my feet. Oh geez. What's happened to me? I'm stuck in super glue. Can't you see? Oh geez. What's happened to me? It's a sticky situation. You can set me free. If you tap me on the shoulder, I can go to my seat. Boom, chicka boom. I can move my feet. Oh geez. What's happened to me? I'm stuck in super glue. Can't you see? Oh geez. What's happened to me? It's a sticky situation. You can set me free. If you tap me on the shoulder, I can go to my seat. Boom, chicka boom. I can move my feet. Oh geez. What's happened to me? I'm stuck in super glue. Can't you see? Oh geez. What's happened to me? It's a sticky situation. You can set me free. If you tap me on the shoulder, I can go to my seat. Boom, chicka boom. I can move my feet. Oh geez. What's happened to me? I'm stuck in super glue. Can't you see? Oh geez. What's happened to me? It's a sticky situation. You can set me free. If you tap me on the shoulder, I can go to my seat. Boom, chicka boom. I can move my feet.
You know, as educators, we talk a lot about the Henrico learner profile, and the skills, and the attributes that all students should master. I am always so excited to hear our students describing and talking about the HLP. The mural at Highland Springs is a great example of student-focused and student-led learning. So, way to go, Springer Nation. This month's Heart of Henrico feature is also linked to our learner profile. As we know, literacy is key to student success and a student's ability to communicate, collaborate, and think critically. This month's Heart of Henrico profiles one of our outstanding school librarians, Amy Coward from Greenwood Elementary, who was just recognized by her peers as a champion for literacy as the Region's 2023 Librarian of the Year. Take a look.
These are two of my favorite book creators, and they collaborated together to make this book. So, I hope you like it. I really do.
I love being a librarian. As long as I have to work, this is the only job that I want to do.
Pardon me, brave swordsman, said the purple poobah, but why are you carrying a chicken?
I'm more focused on fun books than necessarily more educational books, because I just want them to find something to connect with, to fall in love with.
She's an amazing librarian. Everyone in Henrico knows who Amy Coward is. She has just won the Regional Librarian of the Year for VASL. VASL is the Virginia Association of School Librarians. So, winning the regional award is very, very difficult.
If we have any, they're going to be what the superhero books up for. Do you know what that is? Chicken bugle, chicken bugle? All right, have a seat. Our next one.
It's a huge deal, and it's just amazing to be recognized for the work that we do here.
A man named Ludwig.
So, on behalf of our students, families, and administrators, I want to thank and honor Amy, as well as all of our librarians and library media specialists. They are the heart of Henrico. And Amy is here, as well as Rebecca Harden. And if they would please stand to be recognized. Thank you, and congratulations once again. And so, Madam Chair, that completes tonight's Henrico highlight.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cashwell. And the next item on our agenda this evening is the reading of the HCPS mission statement. Mrs. Atkins, will you do us the honor, please?
Yes. Henrico County Public Schools, an innovative leader in educational excellence, will actively engage our students in diverse educational, social, and civic learning experiences that inspire and empower them to become contributing citizens.
Thank you so much. And now, the next item on the agenda for this evening is the public forum. This is a time when citizens are invited to address the school board on any matter of concern about the school division. Citizens have signed up in advance and will be given two minutes to address the school board. Speakers will be called to speak in the order in which they signed up, and may not relinquish their spot to anyone else. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone, clearly state your name and your school affiliation, if applicable, and the subject of your remarks before speaking. After speaking... I mean, after stating your name, please place the number you've been given in the cart near the podium. Speakers must present their remarks to the school board, and not to the audience, and may provide copies of their comments to the school board clerks, which are here to my right, which is your left. The use of obscenity or defamation is strictly prohibited and will be ruled out of order. To assist you in tracking your time this evening, there is a timekeeping system displayed the elapsed time on the screen. Speakers will also receive a notice from the chair when your time has expired. The school board is here today to hear from you. We will not be responding to speakers' concerns or questions during the public forum. However, Henrico staff member will follow up with each speaker. Stakeholders also have the opportunity to provide written comments through an online form in advance of this meeting. Those comments are always shared with the school board prior to the meeting and posted for your review in board docs. Equal consideration and attention are given to both written and in-person comments. Please know, we appreciate your attendance here this evening and for providing your input. The first speaker is speaker number one. Speaker number one. Okay. Then, the next speaker is speaker number two. Speaker number two. All right. The next speaker, speaker number three.
Hi, I'm Kim Carum. I'm here on behalf of my husband, Jordan Carum, who couldn't come because of COVID. I'm just here to read his comments.
Excuse me, can you speak a little bit louder or closer to the microphone for us?
I'm Kim Carum. I'm on... here on behalf of my husband, Jordan Carum, who's home with COVID. So, I'm just going to read his remarks, if that's okay? Okay. At Pocahontas Middle School, there's a serious epidemic of harassment and assault being committed against members of the LGBTQ+ community explicitly by people targeting their identity. I won't waste time recounting details, since the school board is already aware of them. My concern is that there is no effective leadership at Pocahontas Middle School. It took the concerted effort of parents to apply pressure to get so much as an email condemning the actions, and that is not enough. Pocahontas Middle School needs leadership. The principal needs to be out there in the halls, among the students, enforcing these rules. The teachers need to be made active participants, loudly and consistently showing their support for the targeted students. Every single faculty member needs to be hyper vigilant, and any more violent behavior needs to be dealt with swiftly. I am concerned that without continued pressure from the school board, these steps won't happen. We will go back to an environment where the counselor, who was aware for months of assault, responded with, "Boys will be boys," that boys just like them, and that the kids are overreacting. These kids were let down by their counselors, by their teachers, and by the principal. Everyone needs to be held accountable. I am asking for your continued support. I'm also asking that parents be kept in the loop, to be made aware of incidents that happen at Pocahontas Middle School, and to receive updates on the plans laid out by Mr. McCauley in the email sent over two weeks ago. I'll leave you with the success story. Thanks to the intervention of the school board and HCPS leadership, after two weeks, we finally got an email from the principal condemning these actions. When it came out, my child was on the phone with their friend. We showed them the email, and they exclaimed, "We won," and read the email to all of their friends on the phone. It was the first ray of hope these kids have gotten in six months. I am hoping it will not be the last. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is speaker number four.
Hello. My name is Charlie Collins, and I'm a student at Hermitage High School. I'm speaking to you today to ask that Henrico County Public Schools brings back the Prevention Project. The Prevention Project is an award-winning program developed and produced by a committed group of human trafficking survivors, educators, law enforcement, and advocates from leading anti-trafficking organizations. The Prevention Project's goal is to educate youth about human trafficking, so they can prevent trafficking in their own lives and in the lives of others. While I understand that I can seem concerning to teach middle and high schoolers about human trafficking, education is the best way to prevent the next generation from being trafficked. Imagine you see a kid drowning in a river, so you jump in the river and save them. Then, once you've saved the first kid, you see another kid drowning in the river, so you save them. While jumping in the river and saving the kid is great, at some point, you have to ask yourself, while kids keep drowning in that river. The same logic is true with human trafficking awareness, because while it's crucial to support the victims of human trafficking, we also need to prevent kids from getting trafficked. Here is a story of a victim local to our area. A fake name is used for their privacy. Katie comes from an upper-middle-class family who had no traumatic disturbances in childhood. Later in the relationship... all right, sorry. Katie... where was I? Later in the... Katie meets Anthony at a party, and they begin dating. Later in the relationship, Katie gets pregnant and says that is when the abuse begins. As the relationship continues, Anthony becomes more abusive and toxic, eventually getting to the point where he threatens to kill Katie and her family. She doesn't have sex with two other people. When Katie thinks back to when she first met Anthony, she realizes that Anthony was just manipulating her the whole time. Katie's story could have been avoided if she knew what signs to look for, which is why Henrico County needs to bring back the Prevention Project.
Thank you for coming to speak this evening. The next speaker is speaker number five.
My name is Caroline Heiser, and I am also a student at Hermitage High School. I would like to speak to you about how to implement the Human Trafficking Awareness curriculum into Henrico schools. As my colleague mentioned, the Prevention Project is a program that works to educate youth on human trafficking, and specifically, how to prevent human trafficking. They have many lessons on the website that give students an in-depth look at human trafficking, and they provide a high school version and two middle school versions, all of which are tailored to those specific age groups. These lessons touch on important topics like sex trafficking in the U.S., how to decrease demand for human trafficking, media literacy around human trafficking, and how students can keep themselves and others safe. Furthermore, these lessons are flexible, meaning teachers can make their own changes to help students better understand the content. As someone who has gone through the curriculum, it is a well-made lesson plan and benefits students who want to learn about human trafficking. The Prevention Project is also not a new thing in Henrico County schools. All nine high schools has previously held licenses to teach these lessons, and they would simply need to be placed back into the curriculum in a health or family life program. Re-adding these lessons would help students better understand the dangers of human trafficking and how to prevent it in their schools. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker this evening is speaker number six.
I'm Alex Betts. I'm also from Hermitage High School, and I request that the Prevention Project be added as part of the family life curriculum. As a student in the Humanities Center at Hermitage, I went through the Prevention Project curriculum, and it showed me how little I truly understood about human trafficking. Richmond is a hotspot for human trafficking due to its proximity to I-95, and is among the top 10 U.S. cities with the highest rates of human trafficking. This is terrifying, because it shows how easily someone can be trafficked, especially when they don't know what human trafficking is, just like what happened to Katie in the story earlier. To combat this lack of education, the final task for the Prevention Project was to, in some way, spread awareness of human trafficking. Many of my classmates shared their newfound knowledge with students at Henrico Middle Schools, high schools, and libraries. During these presentations, we collected student responses on a Google form. Of the respondents, 55% said they didn't have adequate knowledge of human trafficking, and 96% said they would better understand human trafficking if it was taught in HCPS schools. We asked Taylor Snow, the Henrico County Social Studies Specialist, to survey teachers about the Prevention Project. 92% of teachers said that they believe human trafficking awareness education should be a part of the curriculum, and 11 teachers across nine different HCPS middle and high schools said they would be willing to teach it if given the proper training. HCPS once made the right decision, bought the rights, and made the Prevention Project available to all secondary teachers. As our surveys show, both students and teachers want this issue taught in schools, and if the Prevention Project is added to the family-like curriculum, it will spread awareness about the issue and make our communities safer. Thank you for your time, and I hope you can see the benefit of adding the Prevention Project back into Henrico County schools.
Thank you. Speaker number seven.
My name is Courtney, and I am here for Highland Springs High School. And I'm here actually to advise you that the softball coach at Highland Springs High School by the name of Shakia Robertson has bullied my child and prohibited her from playing her senior year. Amongst other things, the absolute worst thing that she has done is expose my daughter's personal medical information to the other players on the team without mine or my daughter's consent. When we finally were able to have a meeting with the school and the coach, the coach said that my daughter was uncoachable, and she didn't want Angel, my daughter, here to play on the team. She has played for six years and has never been a problem player. After everything we've been through, what prompted me to actually come here today is the fact that another player told her on February 24th that the coach told the entire team that even if she had tried out this year, she wasn't going to make the team. This is very deceitful, and it hurt my daughter tremendously. So, did the coach ever reach out to me about my daughter being uncoachable? Did the coach ever make any attempt to improve their relationship or resolve issues? Has my daughter ever been told by any of the coaches that she's played for in Little League or any other team that she was uncoachable? The answer is no to all of those. So, just let me be clear. I have taken all the proper steps before I came here today. You tell me what my next move is, because I'm tired of going to Henrico County administration schools, and they're failing my child. This is the third bullying situation that she has been through in Henrico County schools, and neither of the first two have been resolved. This is the third one. So, in my opinion, Shakia Robertson is a bad example to those players. She is displaying immature, reckless behavior. And to those young ladies on the team, coaches are not supposed to be bullies. They are supposed to be positive role models, and that is what she is not. So, I've done all the right things. I've taken all my right steps. Last thing I want to say, which is very positive, Latoya Japer there at Highland Springs High School is the absolute best thing that they have at that school. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, the last speaker this evening is speaker number eight.
My name is Jamie Crigger, and I'm a bus driver with Henrico County. I've been driving since November of 2018 in Zone 1. When our neighboring school districts begin to pay higher wages, it creates a ripple effect that impacts our school district employees. For HCPS bus drivers, this often means we're faced with a very tough decision: stay with HCPS with stagnant wages and compressed salaries, or work in a neighboring county for better pay. The current starting driver salary in Richmond is $25 per hour, and in Chesterfield, it's expected to increase to $23 per hour. Currently, HCPS has a starting rate of 1760 per hour. That's roughly $5.50 to $7.40 per hour lower than our surrounding counties, which, if you add that up, is about $600 less per month in our pockets. We consider ourselves the backbone of education, and we hope that you recognize our value and don't neglect to provide us with competitive wages. By providing us with competitive wages, you are proving that our efforts are of value, and you're willing to invest in our future success. Competition may be essential in many industries, but when our salaries aren't competitive, we're losing out on the best and brightest talent to other districts. we're losing out on the best and brightest talent to other districts. We're losing drivers daily, we're losing assistants daily. Most applicants new to this industry will seek a higher salary first. Competitive wages will increase job satisfaction and make us feel valued and respected. Lack of such will cause low morale and a lack of motivation to go above and beyond what we're currently doing. While the long overdue 8.2% increase is appreciated, it's only going to make the compression worse. We have drivers that have been here for 10 to 20 years that are barely making $18 an hour. Our starting rate is $17.60. That's really sad. Even with the new raise, we'll still be well below our neighboring districts. In conclusion, thanks for your time, and I hope you see that we are the driving force.
Thank you very much. Thank you to each of our speakers who came out this evening. Although the board did not respond to public comment, we did hear you, and thank you again for coming out to speak. And the next item on our agenda is the approval of consent items presented to us by the superintendent.
There are a number of consent items, and as you can see, they can be taken in a block.
Board members, do you have, is it your preference to break out and discuss any individual consent item on this evening's agenda? Okay, hearing none, then we can vote as a block. Board members may have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda items.
I move that the school board accept, approve, and/or award items 8.01 through 8.12 on the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. May I have a second?
Second?
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Items 8.01 through 8.012 on the consent agenda have been approved. Board members, do we have any unfinished business this evening? Hearing none, the next item on the agenda this evening is new business. And we're very excited about this portion of our program, where board members are going to present committee updates. And let's start the committee updates. Not only are the slides will show the board member, as well as a description of the committee, and the ones that we're going to go over this evening are the ones which have met recently. It's not necessarily all of our committees. A listing of all of our committees are out on the web, as well as in board docs. If you go out on the web and you click on, you Google "school board members," you'll see, if you click on each board member, you'll see a listing of their schools and the committees on which they're responsible for. And then this evening, we're going to start committee updates with Mrs. Shea.
Thank you, Chair Kinsella. I'm only going to give an update about one of my committees today because another committee, our Business Advisory Committee presented during the work session, and Ms. Kinsella will talk about the strategic plan that she and I both serve on. So, I just wanted to provide a little update and really some background information about Code RVA to the board. Code RVA is a regional school that pulls from 15 different divisions. Often, it's kind of thought of as the computer version of Maggie Walker, but it's very different in a lot of ways. Really, the only similarity is that it's a regional school. So, Code RVA pulls from 15 school divisions. Each division has one board member that serves on the collective Code RVA board. I am that representative for Henrico and have the privilege of serving as the chair for the entire Code RVA board. Just some context about the school. It has a total enrollment of about 340 students, with Henrico students making up 72. Most of the students come from Richmond City, Chesterfield, and Henrico. Henrico also serves as the fiscal agent and HR agent for Code RVA, and for that, we get comp tuition of one student. Code RVA is a lottery application process. So, in contrast to Maggie Walker, which is a merit-based application, for Code RVA, it's a lottery as to which students are selected to fill our 72 seats. Just to give you an idea, last year's lottery, we had 106 applicants, and of that, 22 were accepted to be Code RVA students. Code RVA has three pathways: an associate's degree pathway, a standard high school diploma, and then one kind of in the middle, they call it the mild, medium, and spicy pathway. And to give you an idea, in the class of 2022, 36% of their students graduated with an associate's degree in science with a specialization in computer science. Other highlights from Code RVA, just to give you kind of some success stories, they have a 97% pass rate on their reading SOL, 100% on-time graduation rate for the past three years. And then also a little bit unique to Code RVA is they serve, almost 25% of their population has special needs that they serve. And so, it really is a wide variety of students from a wide variety of regions and backgrounds that come together to make just a really amazing community that is Code RVA. The governor has visited, and his staff have visited multiple times, and he's using it kind of as what lab schools should aim to be in the state, which is really exciting. One challenge that Code RVA is having that I wanted to make this board aware of has to do with their location. They are currently renting space in the Michael &amp; Sons Building. In the last year, the park has been built above it, and so you can imagine there are some challenges having a beer garden above a high school. So, that is a challenge. Also, the space, they don't have physical space to expand any further. The rent is also taking up a considerable portion of their annual fund. So, there is a big look as to a new building for Code RVA and something that is self-standing and long-term. And so, the executive director has reached out to many community partnerships to find, trying to find the best new home for Code RVA. So, that's next steps there, and if you have any questions about Code RVA, I'm happy to answer them now or offline later.
Board members, do you have any questions for Mrs. Shea about what she just presented in her update? Okay, thank you so much, Mrs. Shea. The next board member to present on committees is Mrs. Ogburn.
Thank you, and I'm going to present on Maggie Walker and the Gifted Educat-- is there another slide for the other one? All right, so I do both, I wasn't sure. Maggie Walker Governor's School, I'll do that one first. And much like Mrs. Shea said about Code RVA, Maggie Walker is, as many of you know, a regional program. There are 14 school divisions that participate in Maggie Walker, and each district sends students and one board member to the regional school board. And the full board or an executive board meets monthly. I'm on both of those, so I go every month. I'm happy to bring that update. I want to tell you a few things that are coming up at Maggie Walker and some of the great things that are happening for our students who attend. This week is Future Dragon Days, so our rising freshmen from the division have been to visit at Maggie Walker. They were there on Tuesday of this week. And so, we have our new students who will be starting in the fall, just got their first day to shadow a student there, so that was, I'm sure, exciting for them. Just recently, Maggie Walker hosted the 25th Annual Governor's School Model UN Conference, and that brought together over 500 delegates from across the whole country. That provided our students at Maggie Walker with the opportunity to debate and learn about the world's opportunities and challenges from both the present and the past. They were really excited about that big event. This year, we have four presidential scholars, candidates from Maggie Walker. Three of them are students from Henrico. Just recently, Maggie Walker's girls swim team won a state championship, and the boys' team took second place. The We the People team from Maggie Walker won the state title once again in January. That is the 24th state championship for Maggie Walker in this event. And they will compete at the national level in April, and they will, if they do that, that will be something they've already done four times, they're hoping for a national title again. They are also hosting 20 families, excuse me, 20 exchange students from Germany and two teachers from Munich. This is a two-week German-American partnership program, started in March 18th and will end on April 1st. Maggie Walker will celebrate Women's History Month and welcome Lieutenant Governor Winsome Sears for a visit in April. She'll visit classrooms and students and take a tour of the building. And then I wanted to also mention that nine students from Henrico have advanced as finalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program. And in case you don't know what that is, that's a competition for academics and scholarships. And lastly, for Maggie Walker, I wanted to share that three Henrico students just competed in the Richmond Metro Science Fair. And when, if you want to begin to feel just a little bit like an underachiever, I wanted just to share with you the titles of these three science fair projects. One of our students, Josh Sextnout, won first place in the category of Behavioral and Social Sciences. And his project was optimizing a deep learning model for the prediction of electrical field, electric field induced by transcranial magnetic stimulation for traumatic brain injury patients. Yes, and I was, I read that and I was like, okay, I don't even know what that means. But anyway, he is hoping to compete at the state level and the national level. He won a Regeneron Medical Science Award in that science fair, but will go on to state in hopefully international competition with that project. Another student from Henrico did a science fair project called "The Effect of Different Concentrations of Polypropylene and Polyethylene in Microplastics on the Heart Rate of Daphnia Magna." And another project from a student from Henrico who won an honorable mention was the analysis of aspartame consumption rates via dosbrilla magnogaster utilizing a modified capillary feeding assay. So, if anybody knows what any of those are about, I would really appreciate it, but this is what our students at Maggie Walker are doing, and they are just setting the world on fire. It's amazing what those kids get to do. All right, now I'll move to GEAC, and hopefully I'll be a little quicker, sorry. There's a whole lot going on. The Gifted Advisory Committee is actually meeting tonight, and so I can't be in two places at one time, but normally I am there on those Thursday nights. But the Gifted Education Advisory Council or Committee, I'm not sure which one it's for, I think it's Council, advises the school board on educational needs of all gifted students. And like I said, sometime our committee work does overlap. So, for this one, for me, gifted advisory also does affect Maggie Walker. But it's a part of the goal of the council. Each year, the committee reviews and helps to refine the local plan for the education of all gifted students across the county, so it does affect the entire county. The council meets five times a year. There are representatives from each magisterial district and staff members who come together. This year, the GEAC has had four main focus areas, and that's the identification and equitable representation of students. They also have worked on parent and community outreach, and this is mainly to be sure that more parents and students are aware of the opportunities all across the county that are available to our students. There have also been professional development programs. Recently, ESL training was held for staff, and for the council members, there's oftentimes a very informative speaker. For example, at tonight's meeting, the guest author and gifted education advocate, Dr. Joy Lawson-Davis, is discussing her new book, and her book is "Bright, Talented, and Black: A Guide for Families of Black Gifted Learners." So, one of the visions and the focus of the committee is to provide educational opportunities for our parents to learn more about all gifted students. Their fourth goal is delivery of services, curriculum, and instruction. So, there's, again, this overlap. Being a rep to GEAC and Maggie Walker, we follow the news of Maggie Walker during the GEAC meetings and the enrollment at Maggie Walker. Also, I'm overlapping a little bit with HEFF because HEFF, a HEFF grant, just recently helped create a Rubik's Cube lending library, and our gifted students are having a Rubik's Cube competition on May 4th. Also, a Kiva Plank competition was held in February, and a Math 24 competition will be held at the end of this month, and Word Masters will also, is another program that GEAC parents are involved in. And that's analogy challenges, and that's amongst 21 elementary school. The GEAC also hears information about the Gifted Young Scholars Academy at Wilder. This year, we've had 250 applications for 100 slots. The Giza program is just flourishing. And lastly, just recently, all families in Henrico were sent paperwork on their gifted identification, and that paperwork is due at the end of the month, so planning for next year can get started. The Gifted Advisory Committee is a group of parents who are very involved, all of them are parents or staff members who are related to the gifted field, and they really do a great job of helping our staff just know what the needs of students in the community are. So, there you go. Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ogburn. Board members, does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Ogburn? All right, next update is from Mrs. Atkins.
Thank you, Chair Kinsella. I'm not sure how many of mine are listed. I serve on five committees or boards, all five, with the exception of one met in February. So, I have very recent updates. And so, we'll start with the Henrico Federal Programs Advisory Committee. So, the responsibilities, one of the main, there are many, but one of the main responsibilities is evaluating federal programs and answering questions about their programs, and it can include also looking at goals and objectives around parent involvement policies as well. The HEFF PAC group is, consisted of course, myself, school representatives, community partners, and we also have experts that sometimes attend our meetings. I'll give you the update from February, HEFF PAC met at the Oak Avenue Complex, and they were able to learn more about the offerings at the Oak, as well as learn about open enrollment, early learning, preschool, really trying to get FEV tutoring information available to families so that they can take advantage of this free tutoring opportunity. During our next meeting, families will have an opportunity to provide input into our federal grant applications, which is a big deal, really sort of discerning what that money is for, making sure that communities have a good understanding of how that funding is used and what the results of that funding looks like in our school systems. Next committee. So, SEAC, let me get to that. So, our Special Education Advisory Committee really strives to help provide representation and effective learning environments for students with disabilities. SEAC also is comprised of members of the community, HCPS staff, and myself. We meet throughout the year to listen and learn. The meetings are monthly, and this update, of course, is for February, but topics during our meetings include pre-employment, transition services, developmental disability waivers. A big topic that we hear a lot of requests for information on is dyslexia, so we dive into that topic quite a bit. We also partnered with GEAC in one of our past meetings, and we discussed neurodiversity. The author of that is Emily Kircher-Moore, so a fantastic individual, and she shared her insight on talking about twice-exceptional children and neurodivergent kids. And so, it was a wonderful meeting. We continue to meet. Our next topic is going to be on the annual plan, so our SEAC members will take a look at that, provide input, and then share more details-- at that, provide input, and then share more details to this entire school board on what their thoughts on in moving forward with special education. Next slide. The Instructional Materials Review Committee. So I mentioned earlier that I serve on five that met in February. The exception is the Instructional Materials Review Committee. This committee meets when there is a need. So if there is a request that is sent to the principal or librarian, it's unresolved. There is a request to say, I don't think this book should be in our library, or perhaps it is assigned material, and an individual wants to request for a book change or a materials change. This is another committee that includes staff from Henrico County Public Schools, myself, our librarian as well. So we met this month about a particular book. We get together, we'll review, we have discussion, and we send our recommendation to the superintendent, who in turn shares it with the school board to vote. So far, we received six requests. One was withdrawn, and we'll continue to meet as we receive requests, and those requests go through the IMRC review process. Next slide. So the Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee is Mr. Cooper. I would like to go ahead and provide a brief update on the others since we all, all of them were in February. So the other one is SHAB. And so SHAB stands for School Health Advisory Board. And so we met to talk about device-free opportunities. We're talking about cell phones in classrooms. Also, in our last meeting, talked about metal detectors and getting feedback on what thoughts are around that, what guidance is on that. We have several experts, wonderful community individuals in that group. We also talk about physical and mental wellness in this group, and our meetings are open to the public. Anyone can attend, and you are welcome to. Our next meeting is going to be April 26 at Hermitage High School. And I have one more that I'm going to provide an update on since we met as well, which is the Henrico Police Athletic League. This is a nonprofit organization that partners very closely with Henrico County Public Schools. We use evidence-based youth crime prevention discussions and organization. Again, a cooperative effort of the community, and it's committed to safe and structured activities for youth. One grand success is many of us on the committee get together. The board is constructed of an executive board, which includes Johnny Newman, Dr. Michelle McQueen-Williams, Tony Elam, Jim Severs, Esquire, and Sergeant Ken Ragland, who is the executive director. We met last month at Baker. Many met also at Harvey to read books for HPAL Annual Drop Everything and Read. It was wonderful. Also, for those that are interested, HPAL Summer Camp registration opens on March 3rd. So if there are still slots, what a wonderful opportunity for children to participate. Also, the golf tournament is going to be June 5th, and our HPAL program continues at our Henrico County Public Schools to spark positivity and success, because every kid needs a pal. And that closes my remarks.
Thank you, Mrs. Atkins, for those updates. Board members, do you have any questions of Ms. Atkins? All right. Reverend Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the only committee that I will be commenting on tonight is the Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee. EDAC has held eight meetings this year, with four of them virtual at the voted request of members. Currently, there are two active committees, Equity and then Diversity, Inclusivity, and Belonging. The Equity Committee will always be focused on addressing areas of disproportionality as well as under-resourced communities, whereas Diversity, Inclusivity, and Belonging is focused on the promotion of inclusivity and belonging. Both committees were presented with general data and given choice of what they wish to focus on. And Equity chose to focus on achievement in under-resourced communities, and Diversity, Inclusivity, and Belonging chose to focus on curating belonging in Level 1 ESL students. The latter is building recommendations in collaboration with the multilingual specialists. I'm happy to say that EDAC will be providing recommendations to the board next month. That concludes my update.
Board members, does anyone have any questions of Reverend Cooper? All right. The last one to present is me, and I'll begin with the Henrico Education Foundation, on which Mrs. Ogburn and I both try to attend that, so that they are always supported by a board member. On each of our committees, some of our committees, just for your awareness, some of them will actually come and present to the school board. Henrico Education Foundation is one. The EDAC Committee is another. SHAB is an example of another one. So you may hear smaller updates from board members because of that, because actual Henrico County Public Schools team members will come and present to the board. But anyway, Henrico Education Foundation. Of course, we are very grateful. Henrico Education Foundation is a 501(c)(3) that benefits, that raises money and supports Henrico County Public Schools students and staff. They just held their annual fundraiser Excellence in Education Dinner on February 9th, and it was quite successful. And we're all excited about that, especially since our students and staff do benefit from the money raised there. The money raised actually will go to outreach opportunities to support the community learning centers and learning discovery programs, which will include a new grant for Verina High School and a partnership with the airport to build diversity in engineering. All learning and discovery programs are at full enrollment, and schools actually have a waiting list currently. If anyone knows anyone who would like to work for some of these after-school programs with HEFF, they seem to have some of the same challenges as organizations around the country with finding staff. So please reach out to the Henrico Education Foundation if you're interested in a position Many of you may not know, the former CEO, Mike Taylor, left some big shoes to fill when he relocated back home to Tennessee at the end of last year. And just for your awareness, a committee has been formed to coordinate a search for a new CEO. And, but just so you feel comfortable, HEFF is currently being in good hands with co-CEOs Jay Shively and Robin Roland, who are both here with us this evening. Thank you, you know, for always supporting the board and Henrico Schools. Thank you for being one of our most impactful partners. All right, next slide. Next slide, oh, sorry. The next committee is Multilingual Advisory Committee. These meetings, as many of our committee meetings, include Henrico County Public Schools team leaders, employees, parents, perhaps students, and other community members. With the Multilingual Advisory Committee, we have so many community partners who are also involved. The why is we seek to support all students, including immigrants, refugees, new Americans, and limited English-speaking students and families. At this week's meeting, we focused on our goals, which was talking about ways for all stakeholders in Henrico Schools to be more welcoming to our new arrivals. And we examined social-emotional supports for students and staff, and then we continued to focus on family communication and how we can do better and try to reach every single one of our families in Henrico Schools. And then we had partners, partners gave updates to the committee, as well as the main focus was our guest speaker, who focused on student support and wellness. As you know, that's a big topic right now and should be for both our students and our staff. And then the next slide, please. And then the last slide is Strategic Planning Committee. I don't know if all of you are aware, but our strategic plan, Destination 2025, as we approach that target, this steering committee met yesterday, matter of fact, for the first time, as we're going to start working on the next strategic plan that will move the division forward. And Mrs. Shea also sits on that committee. And the board will receive an update from Dr. Hinton at our April meeting, and she'll go into much greater detail about what we focused on yesterday. I can just tell you that it was amazing to be back with the group and to just think about many of the things in our strategic plan right now. We had no idea. It really is amazing to think about all the work that's been done in Henrico Schools, moving the division forward and supporting students and staff, even if it missed the pandemic. You know, during the pandemic, it would seem that everything was focused on the pandemic, but as you reflect and really look at the strategic plan, it's amazing how much work was done simultaneously. But some of the, of course, some of the goals there with the strategic plan are, of course, academic excellence, equitable and secure physical learning environments, strength of diversity, collaborative partnerships, inclusive, safe, and supportive climate, as well as recruit, retain, and rewarding our educators. And again, Dr. Hinton with Henrico County Public Schools will be giving the board an update next month. Board members, that's the end of my update. Anyone have any questions at this time, comments? Okay. Well, then that moves us to this evening's last agenda item, which is the announcement of our next meeting.
Chair Kinsella.
Yes.
I also have a very quick announcement. I don't know if you want to do that before or after, the announcement of the dates.
Go ahead and make your announcement, Ms. Atkins.
I just want to share, Ms. Walker's eighth-grade Tech Systems and Tech Foundations classes competed in this year's Kid Wind Regional Competition. It was on Monday, March 13th, at Virginia State University, and I was very proud to be there to cheer them on. They were the only school from Henrico County Public Schools that was there in this competition. And so I want to give a very special congratulations to Ms. Walker and her students for a job well done, representing Henrico County and Elko. Several students received recognition and awards, to include Maurice Nicholson and Michael Carter, who won overall second place in the competition. They will be representing Henrico County Public Schools and Elko Middle School on April 8th at James Madison University. So to all of the students, their families, the schools, thank you so much for allowing your students to be in this competition. It was amazing to watch them and their projects in creating solar projects, wind projects, and watching their minds just percolate as they got to see it in action. Dominion Power was there observing, and they were also amazed at how these young minds were able to create solutions to energy. So thank you so much for that moment.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Does any other board member have any other announcements this evening? Okay. I'd like to actually recognize an event that Dr. Cashwell and I had the privilege of attending, and of course, I had the privilege of attending on behalf of the board this week. It was the kickoff to graduation season 2023. I'd just like to shout out another congratulations to our School of Practical Nursing Students, the class of 2023, the first ones to graduate this year. Congratulations to you. And then the last announcement of the meeting this evening is our school board's next meeting. Our next work session is scheduled for Thursday, April 20th, 2023, at 1:00 p.m. And then there will be a monthly meeting that evening at 6:30 p.m. Please note, these meeting times may be adjusted as needed. This meeting is adjourned.